Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
That's called making an entrance just to get in.[3.25][3.25][laughter] Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening are reports of city officers. First item under that is comments by Mayor. I just have one short item. I wanted to, again, restate what a spectacular day it was yesterday at Forest Park. There were over 500 people and really a terrific opportunity for the community to come together to celebrate something that was, you know, literally decades in the making. And as I mentioned yesterday, it was real vision by a lot of people, even our founders over 150 years ago, who actually had the vision to create that park then. So it was an extraordinary day. The weather was perfect and so, so many people had such an impact on where that was and where it's ended up and what it is today. And one of the organizations that I had actually, I don't think anyone mentioned, but certainly deserves great credit as well as the Garden Club, who really crafted and began the plans. So it was a great day. If you've not been to Forest Park, maybe not tonight, but get there. It is just spectacular and it has come out much better than I think any of us could have hoped. And certainly, it was because of so many people who did so much. So again, thank you to everyone who was involved. And that concludes my comments. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager. And sitting in for Mr. Kiley this evening is Elizabeth Halb, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. The first of two items, I'd like to introduce Susan Kelce, Economic Development Coordinator, who's going to discuss the open air market.
Good evening. Just a short, short announcement. The fifth annual Lake Forest Open Air Market starts this Saturday. It will run through the next 18 Saturdays, starting at 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. We have 28 vendors. We have a brand new fruit vendor from Mike Churchill from Colon and Michigan. I went to Ripper Alpine and tested his strawberries last Saturday and they're only here for this week and next week, but they're outstanding. So come on out on the Thursday and Saturday. We have five student vendors from my school. So I'd like to introduce Jack Hubbard, who's one of our student vendors.
Hello, I'm Jack Hubbard and I work for Food Share Food. It's our second year of its time.
Hello.[170.42][170.42][laughter] I'm Jack Hubbard and I work for Food Share Food and it's our second year in operation and we're a local CSA, which is Community Supported Agriculture. So we get produce from vendors at the farmer's market and we box it together and sell it to customers in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff who either pick it up or we can deliver it. But for every three boxes that we sell to customers, we donate one to a family in North Chicago, either at the House of Peace or the Robert T. Community House. And this year, our goal is 120 customers and 40 boxes donated to charity each week. And that's a little about us. We're looking forward to working with the farmer's market again. And thank you for your time.
Any questions for Susan or about the CSA? Great job. I saw you guys last year. You were working hard. So let's hope you get that many this year.
For the second and final item, we have a very nice presentation this evening that will be introduced by Alderman Moreno.
I'm delighted, Mr. Mayor and my fellow members of the council, to ask Todd Nahagian to come up and to give us a little bit of background on this contest that he will formally introduce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're excited to be here tonight. I'm Todd Nahagian from Croya, as you know. And this year, we had a wonderful opportunity. Bob Kiley, City Manager, was in attendance at our recognition dinner and was able to hear the winning essay of our Margot Martino Spirit of Croya Essay Contest, which was written by Kelly Jacobs, who's here tonight to speak and read her essay. Just a quick note on the history of the essay. Margot Martino was the first director of Croya who really made a difference in starting the organization the way it is still running 35 years later. And along with her, Frank Farwell and Jean Hodgkiss are two other members of the history of Croya that we've honored in scholarships that are earned by the students through the Croya Foundation. This year, the winner of the Frank Farwell Community Service Scholarship was Charlie Beeson. And the winner of the Jean Hodgkiss Community Citizenship Scholarship was Kiara Lynch. And without further ado, I'd love to have you listen to Kelly Jacobs speak a little bit about what Croya has meant to her over the last four years and listen to her essay that was the winning essay from this year. The students are the ones that vote on the essay and I'm sure you'll see pretty soon that this was a winning essay. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council. It is such an honor to be up here. Writing this essay was extremely personal and looking back on my four years was, it was a really unique experience to try and think about all of that and capture that in an essay. So it's wonderful that I won it. It was a huge honor. And I'm also excited to announce that we are now making it a tradition. So whoever wins this Spirit of Croya essay, they're going to come here and read it to you guys every year. So we're really excited about that. The name of the essay is called "Home." I didn't really realize I was wondering. As an eighth grader, I'd considered myself particularly confident and mature for someone my age. And as far as I was concerned, I knew who I was. Literally at 14, I thought I knew every major life lesson. Why was I so confident? Truly, I'm not sure, but that's a whole other story. At 14, if you were to have asked me what it meant for me to feel at home, I would have given you a typical answer. Home is where my mom makes me food, does my laundry, and makes sure I'm in bed at a reasonable hour. Sounds like home, right? Little did I know, I was wrong. When you think about a home, I like to think about the front door. Is it big with oak panels and a knocker in the shape of a lion's mouth? Or maybe smaller, a classic door decorated with a homemade welcome sign that's been there since 2000. Well, the front doors to Croya are none of the above. In fact, they're simpler. So simple that when I stepped through them for the first time, I was oblivious to the impact the structure would soon have on me. See, the funny thing about the door, about that door, is what it revealed to me. In most homes, when you open the door, you see a TV, a sofa, maybe a family dog. But what I saw was different. I saw kids, kids of every clique, race, sexuality, and group, all together, laughing, smiling, and living. As a freshman, this type of interaction struck me deep to my core. It inspired me. I immediately knew I was home. In my opinion, a home is where you can watch yourself grow, where you can learn the lessons that guide us through life. With every experience and memory made at Croya, I soon began to bloom as an individual. As each new year brought a new pool of kids into this safe haven, I found myself eager to greet these newcomers and oftentimes found myself walking away with a new friend. Because of these friends, I've learned more about what it means to love someone with your whole heart and what it means to be a genuine friend. That's the first lesson I learned in my new home. The second lesson I learned was how to be joyous. And this must sound silly, but it was a lesson that I needed to learn. Up until Croy's involvement in my life, I thought I knew what it meant to literally be so happy that you could feel it oozing out of you. I realized that I had been wrong. The night after this year's Croy Exec visited the Ronald McDonald House in Chicago. After arriving home from that night, I laid in bed restless. I kept replaying the night in my head, reliving everything, from how proud I felt watching my peers interact with terminally ill toddlers to how hard I had laughed on my way home as my friends created a Croya cheer. As I relived the evening, what I felt, my heart overwhelmed me. It was joy, authentic joy. Finally, this home of mine has taught me how to love. With a family as large and crazy as a family at Croya, the lesson of acceptance is one learned pretty quickly. Through every interaction I've made here, I've learned something about myself, but more importantly, something about someone else. Croya has taught me not only how to love myself, but to love each and every individual in my life with every fiber of my being. Friendship, joy, and love are seriously just three of the 3 million lessons I have learned in the past four years. From walking in as a 14-year-old, thinking I knew it all, to walking out as an 18-year-old, I can honestly say that Croya has led me to the person that I am today. Looking back on my two years on Exec and my one year as a Croya Chairwoman, my heart warms thinking of all the amazing memories with the people who I recognize as my family. My favorite band, The Head in the Heart, says it best when they say, "Mama once told me, you're already home where you feel loved." All of these lessons aside, Croya has taught me the biggest lesson of all. I'm not wondering anymore. At Croya, I'm home.[578.16][578.16][applause] Thanks so much.
Kelly, that was fantastic. Thank you very much. And we're looking forward to seeing next year's winner back at Forest again. So good luck. Anything else, Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Any comments by members of the council this evening? Moving on, item four on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council if you'd come forward and state your name and your address, please?
Paul Hammond, 511 Beverly. So I went to Page County Courthouse to read the 229-page complaint regarding Focus Development. It appears that eight residents asked the Wheaton City Council to reject the plan changes requested by Focus Development. The Wheaton City Council approved the revised Focus Development plans. The eight residents filed the fraud complaint in 2012. The case continued during 2013, 2014, and 2015. The eight residents won their case. The plan changes were not allowed. So in my mind, the real question is, why did the Wheaton City Council approve the plan changes when the Wheaton Plan Commission denied the Focus Development changes? I try to learn from history since it often repeats itself. Jan Gibson has submitted a petition with more than 300 resident signatures requesting the Focus Development Plan be rejected. Maybe the City of Lake Forest overpaid for the Laurel Avenue land. With 8,000 homes in Lake Forest, this means maybe a $1,000 cost on average per house, no big deal. In my mind, the real question is, why is the Lake Forest City Council so determined to upset so many residents with congestion when 300 residents are requesting the rejection of the Focus Development Plan? People are now questioning the whole concept of the Lake Forest Caucus. Just last week, 500 residents objected to the hiring of the new Lake Forest High School principal. Why is the Lake Forest High School Board of Education supporting someone who is hiding her website from the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff residents? So in conclusion, I have proposed a plan to two city council members to reimburse the city for the Laurel Ave. new land. And I believe this plan will make most of the Lake Forest residents happy. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. By the way, Focus Development is also being sued in federal court for not following the American with Disabilities Act on a project on the North Shore. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not hearing anyone else. We'll move on to item number five. Item number five is omnibus vote items for consideration. There are three of them this evening. I'm sorry, four of them. I'll read them all and if, as we always do, if any member of the council would like to take them separately, we'll do so. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Item number one, approval of the June 1, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of a three-year professional services agreement with automated merchant systems for credit card processing services. Number three, approve a resolution committing to the expenditure of funds and approval of the local agency consultant agreement for construction engineering services for federal participation and the local agency agreement for federal participation for the Lake Forest Metro Station, Union Pacific CBD North Line exterior renovation project. And number four, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Any member of the council wish to take any of those separately?
Can we pull three out and talk about it a little bit?
Sure.
Is this, is this old or is this new? Because I thought we had a couple of grants for the East Train Station, one for the exterior and one for the interior. And the exterior one was funded, what, three, four years ago? And we did a lot of exterior? And the interior one, has that funded yet? And we talked about doing interior remodeling back when we had a prospective tenant for the old bank space.
Good evening. Dan Strand of Kewalt Hamilton. The item on your agenda tonight is part of the exterior renovation grant. The phase one of that grant was completed, as you mentioned, the roof exterior or the roof project. This, this particular item, for each project that the city brings forward to be funded under the ITEP grant, the State of Illinois IDOT requires a, an agreement, a resolution that specifies that you're committing to the local match. So this is a project that, the construction costs are roughly $1 million. Eighty percent of that cost is reimbursable by federal funding. And so what you're committing to is a little over $200,000 of local match. And you're basically stating that, yes, we budgeted that, that local match.
And Dan, if I'm not mistaken, so to follow up to Alderman Edelman's question, this is the balance of the exterior renovation?
Right. This is tuck pointing, painting.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all of those?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's the, it's the balance of the old stuff.
Okay.
Right.
Right. I think you've seen all this before, but IDOT requires a separate resolution for this project.
Well, we did it a long time ago.
It's taken a while to get it done.
Can you remind us what ITEP is? I'll look for them now.
ITEP is just the federal funding category under which this falls.
And what does it stand for?
I forget the I. Transportation Enhancement Projects.
Okay. So the I is Illinois?
I don't believe so.
No, not if it's federal.
It's a, it's a federal funding source. It's administered through IDOT.
Okay. It's federal, it's federal money. That was where. That flows through IDOT to us, correct?
Correct.
And Dan, you, the logical question to follow up on that is, there's no concern by anyone that those dollars will be held, held up at the state level?
Right. Because it's not coming from the state budget, it's just IDOT administering it, taking the money from the federal government, passing it through once all their requirements are met to the city.
Let's hope that's the case.
That would be a whole new level.
Any other questions? Dan? Great. Thank you. Any other items on the omnibus? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a final plat approval of the Spiel Plan Preservation Subdivision and approval of the associated special use permit. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant approval of the final plat and the development plan ordinance presented by Kathy Serniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a subdivision that has been before the council a number of times before. This is a recommendation from the Plan Commission for final approval. This is a proposal. This is a proposal for a subdivision of a 10-lot parcel that's located on the north side of Wesley Road, west of Green Bay Road. The property is owned by the Spiels and Mr. and Mrs. Spiel are here with us tonight. Mr. Spiel has actually lived on the property his entire life. In 2012, they decided they wanted to proceed with subdivision of the property. What's proposed is a six-lot subdivision. This property is in the Plan Preservation Subdivision overlay district. That district does allow, although this property is owned R4, it does allow for some variation in lot sizes. Six lots are proposed, as I said. Three of them are just about an acre in size. Those are located along the east, east portion of the property. These two lots are a little bit larger at 50,000. The lot with the existing house is a little larger at 80,000, so provides variation in lot sizes. The Plan Commission did see this on two occasions. In 2012, recommended tentative approval. That came to the city council. You approve that. The Spiels have done everything required by the code to keep their tentative approval active. And it is now before you for final approval. The ordinance for this is on page 74 of your packet. And if you choose to do so, it will be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions for Kathy?
Would you review for us the drainage, stormwater?
Sure.
On this property?
Just, just real briefly, the southwest quadrant of the property will be retained as open space. There will be detention ponds created in this area. There's a significant grade change on this property. So currently, this property does accept water from properties to the north and to the east. The property, however, will be managed through bioswales and there will be a more controlled runoff of this property than currently occurs. The drainage ditch is actually not too far to the west of this property. So that water does flow pretty quickly into that drainage way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. It's nice to see how that planned preservation or historic overlay works because typically, we have a tough time getting a full six lots on 10 acres. And here, we're able to do that. And it's nice to see that staff is even recognizing that the days of acre and a half lots are kind of gone. No, but that's not the market. So these smaller lots, I think, have more appeal to the marketplace and it allows for open space and detention. And it's, I think it's a lot more with today's times kind of development. So I commend you for that.
Tim and I, Tim and I were both on the Plan Commission. I remember it was a good plan then, and it's still a good plan.
Especially the stormwater management from entry onto the property to its exit. That's a vast improvement, I think.
Good question. Do we need two separate motions or can we roll everything into one?
You may do it in one motion. You'll need a six votes among the council that passes.
I'd ask for any public who'd like to make a comment on this particular matter. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to waive first reading of the final development plan ordinance approving the special use permit and final plat subdivision for the Spiel Plan Preservation Subdivision and grant final approval. Do I have a motion?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motions carry.
Thank you, Betty. Next item on the agenda, new business, presentation on the city's information technology trends and consultant report regarding network infrastructure alternatives presented by Elizabeth Halb, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The first of two presentations planned for this evening will be deferred to a subsequent meeting. We have a couple other technology items coming before you later in the summer. So we're going to do the information technology trends at that time. The one item specific to this evening's agenda relates to the city's backbone network infrastructure. The city's capital improvement program set funding aside in FY '15 to replace a blade-and-sand network infrastructure, server, storage. And that was purchased in 2006. So at nine years old, it's well beyond the estimated useful life. The council requested last year that we take a step back and look at alternatives to actually replacing the equipment that's housed at the municipal services building. So we contracted with Client First Consulting Group to do a comprehensive analysis of the city's network infrastructure and to provide an assessment and pros and cons for the alternatives to replacing that system. So we provided the detailed technical presentation in the packet for you to review. Tom Jacobson of Client First is here, as well as Joe Gabanski, Assistant Director of IT, if you have any specific questions. But primarily, they looked at three options. Just replace the in-house equipment that exists today, or put everything out in the cloud, or do a hybrid, which would be a combination of the two. The recommendation coming out of the consultant's study was to do the hybrid, which would be to have a set of physical network infrastructure in place in-house, but to also use the cloud for disaster recovery. And to do a combination of that as being the most cost-effective and beneficial to the city. So I'll open it up. Obviously, you have the technical experts here if you have any questions about the material that was in the packet.
I was very surprised at the differential. I expected that the all-cloud path would be less expensive.
Tom, could I ask if you'd come up, so you could address some questions?
I'd like to understand a little bit as to why that differential is so great and why the hybrid is so much closer to the city continuing to do what it's doing.
We look at cloud solutions across the board for our clients, day in, day out. Almost always, a cloud solution, the municipality would pay for it every three years if, in the equivalent capital cost. So that's what you're seeing in this particular study. It's, we've rarely seen cloud solutions be less expensive over a five- to seven-year timeframe. So I was not surprised by those numbers. I was actually surprised by the hybrid solution being as close to the in-house solution as it was. I think a goodly part of that is when we, we adjusted the hybrid solution to hit two particular pain points. One is disaster recovery. The city's size isn't large enough to house a disaster recovery site safely. And then the other is the electronic mail system. So when we adjusted our, our hybrid solutions, the prices actually came down immediately before that that made everything more cost-competitive. And I think you'll find that with, with cloud solutions overall. What we, when we talked to Mr. Kiley about this, we said, you know, next time in five or seven years, whenever it's next time you replace it, you need to go back out, take a look at cloud services again because that marketplace, prices are coming down, it's new. So it hasn't stabilized yet.
Maybe a follow-on question, and this might be more for Joe. Do these numbers, when we say total cost of ownership, are we factoring in the personnel time?
Yeah. It varied for each of the three options. We worked with Joe and, and the IT team closely on developing the options and the IT support numbers for each of those.
So over time, my expectation would be that the personnel needs would rise as well. Is that not the case?
Personal.
Number of people, number of FTEs?
The personnel costs, I think, remain relatively static year over year. I think the other advantage of the hybrid solution is the disaster recovery, as, you know, recommended to move to the cloud. Statistically, about 60% of all projects, people fail to do the disaster recovery piece. It's the always-forgotten piece. So by actually saving that time and effort, moving that out in the cloud, I think overall, you'll end up with a better solution.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question. Is Client First, is it, is their primary focus on municipal IT systems like ours?
Yes. About 80% of our clients are municipalities here and in Southern California.
And so you must see this replacement cycle quite frequently. Is our, are, are these options typical of what a municipality looks at?
This particular study actually is the first time we've done this study. Most municipalities have been, I would say, reflexively replacing equipment on a capital replacement schedule. But I think that's starting to change. One of the reasons that we did this study this particular way is because I actually want to share it with, with a whole lot of other communities. I don't know if I answered a question very well.
Well, I guess what you're saying then is it's still very early in the cloud migration?
Yes, yes. Gartner Group, one of the major IT consultancies, just came out with kind of their first assessment of disaster recovery as a service. So, you know, the, the kind of thought on these services is really just developing for municipalities.
Any other questions?
So what we are actually seeking from the city council today is concurrence with the consultant's recommendation so that we can go ahead and proceed to an RFP stage. We didn't want to exhaust resources by going to RFP with all three options, which is why we enlisted Client First to do the consultant study first. And so if the, if the council concurs, then we would like to go ahead and proceed to RFP with the hybrid option.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this matter?
I just want more.
Go ahead.
Maybe this is for Elizabeth or Tom, but... Maybe this is for Elizabeth or Tom, but as we learn with the city's water system, the filtration, membrane filtration system, there seems to be an advantage to us of having flexibility. So does the hybrid option involve anything that ties us down into an expensive decision to replace it later? I mean, I would think probably less so with technology than with something like water filters.
That's an interesting question, because that has been one of the kind of major complaints about the cloud electronic mail vendors, is once you go there, you can't get out. But this particular, the solution that we looked at is essentially generic in that it's supported by one of the very major software companies, and you can actually buy the service from many different organizations. So, and the city already uses the core of that technology. The virtualization technology allows you to put multiple servers on one physical box. So I think it's, it is a flexible solution and would allow you to change vendors should need be in a relatively inexpensive manner.
Thank you.
I had one question as well. Would you consider the structure you're talking about to be more secure, or less secure, or equally as secure as we have now? And was security factored into the final decision?
Yes, security's factored in. One of the, you'll see comments throughout, I think, about Department of Justice, essentially certifications for cloud-based services, and that's an evolving portion of this. Some of the vendors have Department of Justice certifications, others do not. So as long as, you know, that's kind of in this particular business for folks like you, that's the seal of approval you're looking for, essentially. So I would feel it is, it's always hard to say more or less secure, sufficiently secure for your needs. And I think as we move forward with this, we'll talk more with the public safety folks about how much or little of their information we would include.
Tom, help me understand a little bit, once you're on the cloud, you can't get out. I mean, this is not even remotely my area of expertise, but does that mean once you have data stored there, it's always going to be there, but you might access it in a different way? Or did I misunderstand it completely?
What it kind of means is, I don't want to say you misunderstood it.
No, I might have.
So what it really means is, once you move to Microsoft Office, the Microsoft Office platform in the cloud, moving out of that platform to Google, or Yahoo, or some other service is very difficult. Those particular platforms should essentially be viewed as proprietary, not standards-based. So it's hard to move from one of those to another.
Okay. It's just hard for me to know how to make a judgment about that, but this is why we hired you, I think.
Yeah.
To help us understand this a little better.
I guess you would say, you know, for instance, we all have our cell phones, right? And it's pretty easy to move your cell phone from carrier A to carrier B, because they all run on essentially the same operating system. But the email, the cloud-based services of the Yahoos, Googles, Amazons are all completely different and are different operating systems, and have different billing mechanisms, and blah, blah, blah.
One more question.
So maybe as a quick follow-on, as a risk mitigant to selecting one of those versus another, how do you evaluate the risk? Is it by going with the biggest?
There's, well, there's two, let's say there's two hybrid recommendations in the report. One is to go to Microsoft Office 365 for email service, which is, what, 90-plus percent of all municipalities use? And if this municipality decided to go with another vendor, staff would complain about the fact that it's not Microsoft. So it's actually, in that case, we are going with the biggest. In the other case, for the disaster recovery side of it, what we're doing is going with something that is essentially ubiquitous, meaning we can get it from lots of different providers, and we can easily move to and from it. So both the hybrid-based solutions have different reasons that we recommended them.
There was a couple of notations in the presentation about the cloud. Department of Justice has not agreed to all cloud deployments for police. Could you just give us a little bit of what's going on there? And is this whole thing going to be flexible enough to allow something separate for the police if we go over to the cloud at any level?
Yes. So I think what's in hot debate right now is electronic mail services for police, and many municipalities and counties are moving that direction in general. But we've heard instances where the Department of Justice has asked municipalities not to move their electronic mail to, into Microsoft Office 365. So as we move through this, we're going to have to work through that particular detail and only move the things that we can, which would be the rest of the community, potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
It's like a moving target.
I had one quick question as well.
Sure.
Tom, the services you're providing to us, do they include, then, helping us sort through the responses to the proposals that we're going to get?
We have not tendered a proposal to do that, but we hope the city selects us to help with that phase.
Anything else? If not, I would ask for a motion for approval of a staff recommendation to proceed with a request for proposals and/or bids for network infrastructures recommended by Client First Consulting Group. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Fiedler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Betty, and thank you, Tom, very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion. Any additional items this evening? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
I sent you both of those.